I'd like to call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us this evening. This is the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, February 11th. Can someone please read the approval of the agenda? Ann?
Yes, I move that the agenda of Monday, February 11th, 2013, Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Please.
Second.
This is a roll call action. Director Witt?
Aye.
And Halt?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Sorry, I thought I shut it off.
That's okay. Director Lavery?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye. Okay, we will move into superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. A reminder that classes will be held Monday, February 18th at all schools except Taylor School. This is a make-up day for weather cancellation December 20th and will be a full day. The make-up day for the January 30th weather cancellation will be February 28th. Since January 30th had been scheduled as an early dismissal, the make-up day will also be an early dismissal for students with professional development for the staff in the afternoon. Second item, the robotics team from both Kennedy and Metro High Schools have qualified for the Iowa First Tech Challenge Championship Competition. Each student team designs, builds, and programs robots and pits them against each other in head-to-head competition. Also, the student team from Harding Middle School placed first and second in the recent regional Future City contests. Last week, author and consultant Mike Maddos visited the district to facilitate professional learning sessions with our staff. The sessions focused on simplifying the pyramid response to intervention process. Our professional learning communities will use the information to refine their processes. Student musicians from Jefferson, Kennedy, and Washington Bands and orchestras are currently rehearsing together as a combined Cedar Rapids Community School District Band. The group of 95 musicians and 30 adults chaperones will travel to Ireland in March to participate in marching events as well as a chamber group performance. A preview concert of this select group will be held for the community at 5:30 PM on Monday, March 11th at Washington High School. And finally tonight, we just received a word today that a juried competition from the National School Boards Association has awarded our ELSC facility an award and our facility will be highlighted at their upcoming national convention. So congratulations, Mike Graham and all of the people. Mike Graham.
Mike Gum.
Yeah, excuse me, Mike Gum. All of the people at Shive Hattery were very excited about this recognition.
Great, yep. Okay, board reports. Alan, I think you have a board report on legislative activities.
As your legislative chair of the board, Dave Benson and John Lavery and I were in Des Moines on Monday at the IASB Alphabet Soup Group get-together and we had some very good meetings afterwards. We went over to the Capitol and so we hit some of our legislators then and talked about where things are going with the session. And then on Tuesday, we had scheduled our UEN, the Urban Education Network, with Margaret Buckton and Dave Benson and myself went around and we met pretty much all our legislators from the area. We also met some people on the education committee and subcommittees and had some good FaceTime with them and tried to find out where things are at and made our case about the timing of the allowable growth is paramount to this district, just like all districts. So there's a resolution later on to cover that at the end of the agenda.
Alan, where do we see, I think it's in the House, I believe the Senate approved the allowable growth. Is it in the House now? And where do we think that's going to go?
The indication, Dave, you can correct me, but the indication is that they're trying to take the reform efforts concurrently with the allowable growth. They do not want one to proceed ahead of the others. So there was talk of combining those into one bill or at least when they vote on it, the bills would be happening on the same day at the reform and the allowable growth would be voted on the same time. So right now, they've sent, the House sent the bill over to the Senate that the governor had put together for reform and they're chewing on it. And then the Senate had already sent over the 4% allowable growth for both this year and next at 4%. So that's in the House right now. So there'll be a conference committee and the whole thing will come together here. And we pushed for, what was it, March 4th? March 4th is our drop-dead date that we needed some indication so that we could move forward as a district.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that update. Keith, I believe you had a report?
I do. I attended the conference board meeting for the assessors and there's just a couple of items that I'd like to cover. One is that county will be releasing a whole bunch of new residential assessments, I think, mid-February, so that impacts 34,000 properties. The other item is that we're continuing, you know, working with assessors to have really good formalized systems and evaluation, the job of assessors doing better community relationships and so on. There's been really good progress on that. And finally, pictometry is a flyover system and so on that the county auditor and bunch of groups are using. And they said, well, they'd bring in the board, I mean, conference board and the training. And I said, well, let's open it up to all the agencies and everything as well. And I think it'd really have great application for the school district because, you know, identification of houses when you take a sick child somewhere or areas that might expand in the future and that type of thing. So when that comes around, I will notify Dr. Benson and it's now being done cooperation between all the agencies instead of one agency just doing it and so on. So it's a really dynamic system. I wish I understood it all, but it is really, can be really helpful, so.
We'll look forward to learning more about it.
Oh yeah, that's good.
Alan?
I forgot one thing. The Grantwood AEA had a $20 million cut to their budget last year and they're again being requested to cut that by $20 million. And I talked to Joe Crozier about it and he, as the head of Grantwood AEA, says that anything we can do as a district, so I'm just putting this out there to support that because there is not the knowledge that there should be as far as the services they provide the school districts on a regional approach. And it would be a shame if, in fact, they continue to get squeezed for our district. So just wanted to put that out there.
That's a good point and I think it's important for all board members of all districts in the area served by all AEA's that they contact their legislators because that's a very huge financial hit for particularly Grantwood. Other reports?
Mary?
Yes?
Just kind of a brief update on chalk talks. Still working on trying to arrange one for later this month and then working on setting another one up for the northwest side of Cedar Rapids, so in March sometime. So I'll let you know as soon as I confirm those dates.
Thank you. And my goal is, and I hope that you share this goal with me, that we provide this on a quarterly basis. So if you're interested in providing a date, I'd like to get that out sooner than later. I just had a couple of comments. Mind Mixers was launched about mid-January, I think it was mid-January, and I think there's a lot of activity out there. If you haven't joined in the conversation, please do as a registered commenter. I know that board members, I believe, are registered and commenting and Marcia's going to send a communication out sometime later this week. Do you want to be identified as a board member or do you just want to be identified as a participant? And I'll let you decide and you can communicate that with Marcia later on. We originally designated me as the board voice, which is fine, but if you feel compelled that you'd like to be identified as a board member, I think you should be able to do that. Pro Start, I had the opportunity this last couple of weeks to be a hamburger judge at Washington High School at 8:30 in the morning. I tasted five different hamburgers along with some other judges and they were delicious and we graded them based on a variety of criteria. And as I started to talk to some of the students, I realized that starting next fall, and Mary Ellen, I think you'll provide a report to us maybe in the summer, about Pro Start, which is culinary program that I know Washington High School and Jefferson has signed up to start in the fall for our students. And I believe it's a dual-credit course and we're two of the first high schools in the state to offer it, is my understanding. It's really neat and these people are very excited in their culinary program. So I was happy to be a part of that. Thank you, John. Couldn't make it, so I did for him.
I knew you liked hamburgers better than I did.
Especially at 8:30 in the morning. And then I just want to thank all administrators for turning their PowerPoints into us by Friday of last week. It certainly helps us be more active in conversation, so we're going to continue to encourage you to provide those PowerPoints before a meeting starts. Okay, thank you. Next, we have consent agenda and I ask at this time if any board member would like to pull an item for additional conversation, discussion, or questions. If not, this is a roll call action to approve. Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Ann Halt?
Aye.
Director Lavery?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
And then I'm going to turn this over to Rhoda, I think, for our district wellness report and initiative.
Yes, thank you, President Meisterling, Dr. Benson, members of the board. We are really pleased to have this opportunity to describe for you our efforts to work together to develop a coordinated approach to shaping a healthy school community. Tonight, Grant Schultz, our facilitator for physical education and health education, Susie Kettleson, our manager for food and nutrition, Sue Wilber, human resources specialist for risk management, and I will share our current wellness efforts with you. These are all aligned to our strategic plan, especially our core value, safe and healthy environment. And our goals, enhance student social, emotional, and behavioral development, improve performance in all curricular areas, and increase family and community support for student learning and citizenship development. Well, why wellness? We have a responsibility to implement our wellness policy throughout the district and we have to evaluate the status of implementation and communicate that to our community. In order to do this, we need the involvement of all of our schools and our staff and our families. Also, Governor Branstad has launched the Healthy Estate Initiative in 2011. This was in response to Iowa's well-being index rank being 19th in 2010 and his goal to have Iowa be number one in five years. And he's asked schools to participate in this effort as well. Also, as you all know, Cedar Rapids has just been designated a Blue Zones demonstration site and we're involved with that. And also, health needs of our students and our staff indicate that we need a coordinated effort to address health and wellness. The average percentages of our students overweight and obese are steadily increasing. We need to do something about that. So we have efforts underway.
Just can I interrupt for a second? And while I serve on one of the policymaking branches of the Blue Zone Initiative, I want everybody to know that Rhoda has really taken the lead in representing our school district in the Blue Zone work and she's done a very commendable job in that regard, so thank you.
Thank you. So, so far, we've formed a district wellness council and that provides leadership for our efforts and supports development of school wellness councils. The members of the district wellness council are primarily leader representatives from each building, from our district offices, and from the community. So we have representatives from PTA, from public health, from Blue Zones, and from the Healthy Schools Program that sit on that district wellness council. We've met a couple of times this year already and we're planning to meet a couple of times more. With the help of our administrators and designated school wellness leaders, we've been able to form a school wellness council in, I must have gotten happy with that, a school wellness council in each of our buildings, including here at the Educational Leadership and Support Center. And we're really excited about that. The school wellness councils assess building health needs, they determine goals, and they plan and act to meet those goals, they involve their communities, and they communicate their progress to everyone. And then also, as Dave just mentioned, the district is engaged in leadership of the Blue Zones Power 9 and the Blue Zones School Policy and Work Site Wellness Strategy Teams. And we're incorporating all of these efforts into our district wellness efforts as well. So that you'll see us implementing some certification, school, and work site pledge items like walking school buses, school gardens, and the Healthy Schools Program. And Grant is going to share with you some information about that Healthy Schools Program right now.
Thanks again, Grant Schultz, PE and Wellness Facilitator. Just going to give a brief background about the Healthy Schools Program and then touch specifically on some PE things that we've been doing here in the district. First of all, some background on the Healthy Schools Program. It is a tool we've been using for the last four years to help us implement what we're doing in our district wellness policy. Four years ago, we had seven schools that were involved in the program and now every one of our schools are participating. All the schools participating are going through this six-step process. The first step is a very big one and a challenging one, and that is to set up a school wellness council at each of our schools. And we've been fortunate that we've had the support of our district administration to be able to do that. And now we have a school wellness council leader and a school wellness council at each of our schools. We've gone through the first five steps of this process already this year. We've assessed our school, we've looked at, we've taken an inventory, basically an online inventory, to assess our school. We've developed action plan, we've looked at some resources, and now schools are taking the initiative to take action and to help implement basically some things from our district wellness policy. The last piece on there, you know, celebrating successes, that's something, you know, obviously we're hoping to do by the end of the year. You know, ideally, our goal is to get each of our schools to become a bronze school, a bronze healthy school. And if they do certain, meet certain criteria, they would become a bronze school. And why is that important? It's not really for the award, but it shows that we've met all that criteria. And also, based on the Blue Zone, if they become a healthy schools bronze school, they would also be considered a Blue Zones designation school. So that's part of our commitment with the Blue Zones as well. With the Healthy Schools Program, there are seven categories that we kind of look at to evaluate. One of them is physical education, one of them is student wellness. The other five are here, health education, policy and systems, our cafeterias, our vending, and employee wellness. And like I said, one, I just want to just talk briefly about and that is physical education, just to give an update. I was fortunate enough to be here and talk last year. But just to give an update with our elementary and middle school programs, we use a nationally-supported standardized-based fitness gram program, which is a physical fitness testing program. And we've got all of our schools in the district utilizing that program. We also host a number of events for kids. We have a fifth-grade fun run, which is in May. We have two gymnastics meets for our fourth and fifth graders. Last year, we started a new track meet for fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. So we have lots of different events to try to get kids involved. Another thing, I'd like to just show you a picture here of, you know, schools are doing lots of great things and here's a picture and I didn't realize at the time Franklin was presenting tonight, but here's a picture of Franklin. They have a fitness room, a fitness center, basically. I know they've, I think they've got a grant and some school funding to build a, basically a fitness center in one of their rooms next to the gym. You know, this is utilized by their students during the school day as well as students and staff before and after school. And this is actually a picture at 3:30 in the afternoon, so basically after school. So you can tell how much it gets utilized. Kids are learning about their heart rate and being active. Our high school, I think have made some great strides in the last couple of years. Couple of changes that we've made at the high school level is the course offerings that we have. We have changed our course offerings and we have some courses that we now offer at all three or all four, in some cases, high schools. We offer a team sport-type class. We also offer a performance PE class, which is a high-intensity everyday PE course, a personal fitness course, and then we also offer our everyday health and fitness class. So basically, the idea behind it is to give kids some options. And also in these classes, we're fortunate now that we have heart rate monitors that we use every single day in most of these classes and it's made a huge difference in terms of the participation, the energy level, and even the amount of kids that have been coming out and signing up for PE. I know last year when I talked, I mentioned something about the high school waivers. You know, that's something that obviously continues to be a concern. You know, last year, I think this time, or last year, we had 5,700 waivers that were given out to waive out a PE. You know, one of the things that we're doing to try to combat that is to offer the amount of classes that we do, the different classes. Some other things that we're trying to do, excuse me, sorry, is basically our heart rate monitors. That's made a huge difference. In the last couple of weeks alone, I have gotten comments from two PE teachers, one from Wash, one from Kennedy, and actually a principal from Jefferson about the progress that has been made at these, at these high schools. The PE teacher at Wash commented about, you know, the kids are moving more, they're more active, and more kids are, like I said, signing up for PE. The same PE teacher, PE teacher at Kennedy said the same types of things. The principal at Jefferson noted, failure rate at Jefferson in terms of PE has dropped. The expectations and the vigor in PE has increased. The number of kids that are taking PE has increased. And Jefferson has actually kind of piloted something this year where they are not allowing waivers. But they, what they are doing is they're requiring kids to take at least one PE a year and it's, and it's an everyday PE course. So they take PE at least once a year and it's every day instead of every other day like it has been in the past. And it's, I think it's obvious with the comments from Mr. McDonnell that it's made a huge difference in the kids and the kids are enjoying it, they're enjoying the new classes, the heart rate monitors are making a difference. So I guess with that, I just have a real quick video, about a minute and a half here, and it's actually a video from Jefferson. It kind of highlights all the classes and some of the things they're doing there, so we'll show that here real quick. All right. Thanks, last thing. Last year, I talked about murals a little bit at the elementary level. Just want to update there real quick with, it kind of fits into the student wellness area there. You know, that's continuing to go well. You know, it's probably one of the highest rates of participation out of any of our activities that we offer for kids, so that continues to go well. In these other categories, I'm not going to touch on. I know Sue's up next, she's going to touch on employee wellness here a little bit, so I'll just turn it over to Sue.
Good evening. So as far as employee wellness, I'm just going to touch on this real briefly. The first thing we did when we started talking about wellness was I talked to some colleagues and people in other organizations and WelCOA is a name that came up a lot and they're the Wellness Council of Iowa. And it seems like a lot of businesses that have aggressive wellness initiatives have joined this organization. So that was the first step we took, was to join this organization. They have a ton of free resources and ideas that they're giving us to get our wellness efforts kick-started within the district for employees. The very first thing they suggested was to do an employee survey. Obviously, our efforts aren't going to go anywhere if we're not designing them to what the employees are interested in. So we did this employee interest survey. They were so pleased with the results and the response that we got that they asked if they could put a quote on their website. So I thought that was really exciting, that our employees are so interested in wellness. They said platinum-level response rate to a survey is 45% of participants and we had over 50% respond to the survey. So that was really exciting. So we tailored that to try to get ideas to get our efforts started. This next slide, I'm just going to talk about real briefly because Susie's going to talk about the website, but I just wanted you to see that we do have things out on the website for people to see. Another, we want to be really aggressive about getting information in front of people so that they can find resources to things that they're looking for. So under employee wellness, we just have some different things that we're working on. And then we also have a link to Health Matters at Work and that's a free service we get through the Health Charities of Iowa. And when you scroll down on there, there's free podcasts that you can participate in, there's diet and exercise management, there's different classes, there's all sorts of resources out there for our people. So just something to show you briefly. What else have we done? We had the Lynn County Public Health Department come out and give us an assessment. It was just to give us a baseline. We tried for the Corridor Wellness Work Site Awards and in order to be eligible for that, they need to come and give you an assessment. And we just, we didn't think we probably would get an award the first year since we hadn't really done too much, but we wanted to know where our point standing was. So they came out and gave us an assessment. We scored 61 out of 126 points, so it's 48%. Again, it just gives us a baseline so we know what to do going forward. They gave us a report to give us ideas and things to work on, you know, different things like vending machines, different options we can put in the vending machines, you know, we got points for having the bike racks here and so we encourage that type of thing, gave us some ideas about physical activity throughout the day and those sorts of things. So we plan to use those ideas going forward. Along with that is the Blue Zones, which I know you've heard a lot about. We're also working to be a Blue Zone certified work site. In order to do that, we need 78 points and we have 56 currently, so we're well on our way to that and that's a goal of ours to be a Blue Zone certified work site. work site. Flu shots, we did our second year of flu shots. The participation doubled from last year. So just another initiative we're taking to keep people healthy, and they're obviously very open to it because we had, we doubled the participation from last year when we offered flu shots. Blood pressure checks is something new we've offered this year. Again, just to get people thinking about their health and those sorts of things. We're offering monthly wellness challenges. We started that in December, and we had a 12 days of wellness, and people participated in that and then turned in sheets, and they could win a prize. January, we had a walking challenge where people logged their miles and turned those in. So we're offering a challenge every month to get people, again, thinking about wellness and always trying to move. We've had a lot of people come visit our building and make the comment that it's so refreshing seeing people move at all times of the day here. I come in the morning and people are walking, I come in the afternoon, people are walking. Our challenge officially ended at the end of January, but we still see people utilizing those walking routes, so that's really exciting. We're going to be offering Lunch and Learns. We had one this month, and we hope to offer one of those every month about different health topics. Again, to keep different health things in people's minds, and we're going to get surveys out to see what they might be most interested in learning about. We're going to have someone come onsite and do exercise classes, and those are going to be offered by a certified personnel trainer, and that would be open, of course, to all district personnel, hoping to get some of them in the evening hours so that teachers and people out at buildings would be able to come here and take part in that. And then reaching out to gyms to see if they would offer any discounts for our employees. The YMCA offers a 15% currently, and we've posted that on our website, reaching out to some other ones. And again, just getting that information on our website to let our people know about these things is some of the initiatives that we've taken so far this year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Susie. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm going to talk just a little bit about the coordinated effort. They mentioned that we are participating in the Healthy Schools Initiative, and all of our schools are now part of that. And then, of course, the Blue Zone. But I think it's also important to recognize that USDA also really wants our schools to take a very active role in creating a healthier school environment. So all of our schools are now team nutrition schools, and we are also working within the Food Nutrition Department to reach achievement goals within the Healthier U.S. Challenge. And the purpose of this slide is to show how all those programs work cooperatively together, and they have the same kind of goals, but they may offer different kinds of resources. So we're very excited about that team approach. And then this piece, I'm very excited about sharing our new district's website. This was an attempt to have one location where all of our information and progress is in one place. And so this was created to share our vision, our goals, our progress to the community, and also provide easy access for all of our parents and teachers to go for some resources that they can use in the classroom or at home, or support those kinds of things that we're teaching during the day. And if you see the wellness logo, I think it's important to note with this is that it was, it's a bold visual example of what we believe that emphasizes the whole person. And we're talking about the mind, the body, the spirit. And what we hope is that'll impact both academically and socially for the well-being of our students. It also stretches, stresses a positive approach to living, and the ultimate goal is, of course, being the state of being healthy. So we're very excited about that. And then I would like to add a personal note that my daughter created this design for the Cedar Rapids District, and she's a 2010 Jefferson graduate, so we had a student help us design that, or a former student help us design that, so. And then if you go with the menu there on the side, and then down below, there's two ways we can access information. If you click down below on the wellness approach, what we had here was that we wanted to have a format that demonstrated that this integrated kind of flowing presentation of information. So of course, parents can access, or someone can access, how does wellness actually tie in to the strategic plan? And if you go up above into the core values there, we actually will have the strategic plan with, kind of focused then on the areas that wellness will tie into that. And then going back to the approach, we also have down in the district wellness policy, easy access to where our policy is located. In that same section, it also talks about the regulations, who are the leaders of it. So this is easy access to the policy and information. Then going down into the District Wellness Council, it talks about the charter and who are members of that. And so there's all that information at easy access. And then last, down at the School Wellness Council, we have the roles and expectations. And this is a piece where if, when we're going to be measured or evaluated, it's very clear what our roles and expectations are for the School Wellness Councils and the District Wellness Council. And if you go back to that page down there, and there is not the progress, if you see there's not a hyperlink yet, but once we have that progress, then we will post it for anyone to be able to see. So it's meant to be very transparent on the work and the initiatives and the progress that we're making in that area. And then the other part that we're very excited about is the wellness resources. If you go to wellness resources, just for example, on nutrition education, if you go there, we have written up descriptions for every single link so that it's very easy for teachers to go and to look at that and be able to say, okay, I've got five minutes I want to use. And this is, they can read through that, see what they might be able to do, how it might tie into a current lesson that they're working on. And so they would be able to access that information. So if you go to the Iowa Department of Public Health, Pick a Better Snack, it'll actually bring them to a website and kind of work, walk them through different resources. So these are all approved and would be great resources for them. And then the one that's kind of exciting, if you go back, again, just into resources on the menu, if you look down at the bottom, it says there's an app for that. We realize it's a little tougher to reach high school students, and most likely they have their phones with them everywhere that they go. So this is a place where you can go for an app, and they can then have that and have access to information on their phone at all times. So we went through and provided a lot of different kinds of things, pedometers and maybe some personal fitness, information about when they're eating out or going to a restaurant, keeping track of calories intake, that kind of thing. So very good resources for middle, high school students. And then a dietitian addition. Actually, this is brand new as of today. This is a professional outreach effort. We have Amanda Brown in our office, who is a registered dietitian, and she will be writing a featured article approximately once a month. And this is just another personal attempt and our way of having a unique feature on our, for our district. And this one, because February's Heart Month, she wrote an article and provided some great information, some tips for heart-healthy lifestyles. So we're very excited about that. And then at the end there, then of course, it's the link back to the Employee Wellness Initiative that Human Resources and Sue's leading. And so all of it is tied, all it's tied into that whole wellness website, that one-stop, get anything that you need approach, so. All right. And I just wanted to thank Randy Weiger. He did an outstanding job of taking our vision and making it a reality, so. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Any questions or comments?
I appreciate your presentation. I know this was something that the board had requested a while ago, and I really think this is perfect. A question I have, though, if you want to address this, is kids in the classroom, is there, you know, we have this facility study looking at new ways to learn. Is there any movement to where kids are standing up learning? I don't know, I mean, I have no idea what the research is on that. I've just heard that people are moving in that direction where they'll have, in the classroom, the kids are standing more and not in their seat in the traditional way?
Yeah, I think that's happening individual schools, I think, individual classrooms. It's not a school-wide effort or a district-wide effort, but I know some teachers have piloted some different things, even with, I don't even know what you call them, the exercise balls and sitting on them. So there are different things out there. I know at the elementary level, many schools do physical activity breaks throughout the school day. Again, it's not school-wide, it's not district-wide, but those things are happening in spotty places throughout the district.
Grant, do you mind just staying there for just a moment? I really appreciated your report on waivers. I know that was a concern of ours last year, and so I'm, speaking, I know on behalf of the rest of the board, we're thrilled to see that there's more activity instead of waivers going on. So thank you for your efforts there. Let's talk about walking school buses for just a moment. You know, we do have neighborhood schools. Why don't we have more walking school buses? So how far along are we in progressing to rolling that out?
I'd say we're not very far along, but we just recently have learned that Lynn County Public Health has some grant dollars that they can use for schools that are willing to, you know, go there and explore whether or not they might become, you know, walking school buses. So Lynn County Public Health has made this, made all of our schools aware of that, and I believe that three of our elementary schools have kind of jumped on board and said, we're interested in exploring this. Apparently, I don't know a whole lot about it yet, but apparently they have to first have some sort of an assessment to determine whether or not they have safe routes to school, and they have to kind of pass that test first before they can, you know, jump on board and try the walking school bus thing. But I think it's Optimist Club and some other community volunteer agencies are going to be working with Lynn County Public Health and our schools to get those going, and apparently want to just pilot those in those three schools, if possible, by May, so.
Oh, good. I know sidewalks are an issue. Not all of our schools are serviced by sidewalks, and we've talked to the city about that. So I know that will maybe be a little bit of a stumbling block in that assessment. But, okay, great, thanks. Community gardens. What's the conversation surrounding the community gardens?
You know, I think for a lot of these initiatives, we're just now becoming aware of what's going on in each of our schools by, you know, virtue of the fact that we have our District Wellness Council now. We're bringing representatives together, and part of what we're doing at those meetings is sharing with each other what efforts are underway. So I know of a couple of schools, I believe Hiawatha, and I think Taylor, had community gardens.
Garfield has a community. The Polk Neighborhood has a community, yeah.
Right. I know that that's something that is one of the pledge items for the Blue Zones, and that some of the school policy strategy team are very interested in moving forward, too. So again, they're, they're talking about involving the community, like Matthew 25 had a lot of gardens, just, you know, bringing those people who have already tried this in different areas of our community together into our schools to help us understand how we could make that a reality, too.
And you know, gardens are a great way to incorporate STEM initiatives into the curriculum. So I think I would encourage you to continue to pursue that. I suspect there's some money out there for that as well. John?
Grant, I'm excited about the physical activity in our schools, too, but I'm looking at physical education policy regulations for the high schools, and we haven't really looked at this or revised anything since 2008, according to the policy. And how often, Laurel, will that come up for review?
By Iowa code, every five.
Every, so we should be soon looking at that again. I'm just thinking about, again, what the requirements are by state code. We have kids that might be involved in a sport, they might be doing marching band, they might be doing show choir. You made a comment about Jefferson High School doing one thing as some sort of new initiative versus the other high schools. And again, when I start to hear about schools doing different things and how that fits into board policy, it just raises a little bit of a red flag for me. So not that it has to be answered right now, but I think administration, at some point, when we talk about this policy, I'd like to understand that a little bit more to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the students in physical education, but also being fair to all the students across the district, so.
Other questions or comments? Gary?
Thank you, folks, for your time and your presentation tonight. A couple of questions. One with, on the elementary side, assuring the daily activity of the students. I know that we provide PE classes for all the elementary students, but wellness and physical fitness can't be achieved by just the physical fitness classes, and it's really requires daily activity. Do the individual buildings, those wellness councils, are they looking at the requirements of the, of the activity according to our own board policy, how much activity the students have? And looking at some of them, I think it's just a minimum of ways that we can even expand that a little bit, too.
Right. Yeah, our School Wellness Councils, again, kind of what Rhoda touched on, we're kind of at the beginning stages of, you know, assessing all of our schools, assessing our needs and where our gaps are. And, you know, those will definitely arise as we keep moving forward. You know, I know at our elementary level, I know they've reported to Mary Ellen on specific minutes or how they're getting their minutes on a daily basis, so for the Healthy Kids Act.
And then we've talked about the walking school buses, but another activity for, another way of getting physical activity is biking to school. And I know, again, and we get into safe routes and sidewalks, and it's a community, it expands to the community, but I hope that we also have those discussions with the Power B, the city, and so on. It's a way for the individual students without relying on a bus and other people, that they can become more active. It's a good, healthy activity. And just a compliment to Rhoda, and I know your work and what you've done with the Blue Zone, and it helped the city accomplish what we want to do. I think we'll all be better off as a community as a result of your work and the work of the community as we move forward with the Blue Zone. So thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Grant, on grading. And, you know, historically, it's been difficult to grade people in physical education. So what, how are we working through that?
Grading is definitely difficult in physical education, and through our PLC groups, we've been able to, I guess, take our learning expectations that we have at each level and come up with assessments to find ways to grade kids. And so, like I said, we've been able to do that at all three levels. The nice thing is with the heart rate monitors at the high school level, you know, part of learning about your heart rate, using that as a tool, you know, has helped at that level. The kids themselves are more involved, held more accountable for what they're doing, so that has definitely helped. And at the middle school and high school level, you know, we're looking, we're just starting to look into standardized base grading a little bit. We're doing that at the elementary level, and I think that you may see some more changes as we move forward, but I think it's been a nice piece at the elementary level. I think it has actually helped our PE teachers assess how kids are doing in specific areas.
And then I have another question. There was a brief note about Jefferson and a special award. Can we maybe get, I'm not asking for it tonight, but maybe a little brief statement on exactly what they done, they were doing, and the recognition for the programs that they've done as well?
Sure.
Thank you so much. We very much appreciate the information, the report, and the hard work that you do. Thank you. Okay, with the board's permission, I would like to go ahead and move the open enrollment survey results up in the school improvement plan to follow that. I know that we have some interested folks out there, so that's okay with everyone?
I don't know if Justin has quite caught up to me yet.
I'm seeing a, no. I think you give him just a...
Well, just while we're waiting, looks like we've got it.
Thank you, President Meisterling, members of the board, Dr. Benson. This long-awaited survey is now available. We surveyed families who are open enrolled out of our district back in July, and we provided the families who were not continuing in a district with an open-ended survey. And by continuation, I mean, a family may have been attending in College Community, moved into the Cedar Rapids district, and wished to continue to attend in College Community. Since we knew why those people were open-enrolling out, we did not survey them. So, we did this survey in July, and at that time, we had 1,334 open-enrolled-out resident students. Of those, 504 were continuations, and there were 830 students then who were open-enrolled out for other reasons, and they represented 499 families. Of those 499 families that were surveyed, 307, their open enrollment out began in kindergarten. And so, what we know from that is that families who open enroll in or out as kindergarteners typically persist and bring their siblings with them or take their siblings with them. 192 of the open enrollment families began their open enrollment in either grades one through 12 after the kindergarten year. There were, we had about a 27% response rate, and of course, families may give you more than one reason. So, while we heard from about 134 families, we had more reasons for leaving than 134. All of these districts were surveyed, and you can see there the number of families that were surveyed in each of those districts. We didn't get responses from all of them, obviously, since there were 499 surveys sent out and only 134 responses. But when you look at the reasons for open enrollment, and we tried to categorize these and kind of collapse some of them, many of them, there were less than 3% of the responses, or less than 5% of the responses in some of these categories, for example, achievement. Only 3% said they were leaving for reasons of achievement, higher test scores, things of that nature. There were some continuations in here that we hadn't picked up before, so we added those to our continuations. We'll talk about the convenience ones. 17% said they were doing it for convenience reasons, and I'll go into the details of that in a minute. 2% said they were leaving for demographic reasons. Changes in the demographics of our district had prompted them to leave. 4% indicated that it was due to funding. Either they thought the other districts were receiving more funding because they were growing, or they had concerns about how the district was using its funding on students. 20% were in the Marion Homeschool Assistance Program, and that's primarily the Homeschool Assistance Program that families were going to for a variety of reasons, and we don't know all the details of that at this point. 2% said they were leaving for instructional reasons. For one reason or another, they felt that the instruction might be better somewhere else. 3% indicated they were planning to move into that district anyway, so they wanted to make sure that their kids got started there at the beginning of the school year, even though their move might not have been until later in the school year. 3% indicated organization, and the organization had to do with our changes in attendance areas. One indicated that school schedules were a consideration that they were open-enrolling out to another district for. Another 2% based their requests for open enrollment on their perceptions of the district, what they had heard from others, seen in the media, and so forth. 4% indicated that they had a preference for a school district, either because their child's friends went there, they were alumni of that district was often the reason given, so it was a personal preference. 8% indicated they were leaving for programmatic reasons, and we'll go into more detail there. 7% indicated safety was a consideration, and 13% indicated that the size of the district was a major factor, or the class size in our district, and we'll go into that detail in a little bit. Staff issues had to do with either staff or administration, issues that families had had with staff that were prompting them to leave. Okay, we talked about continuation, we've talked a little about staff issues, safety, things that were cited in that category, and this was only 7% of those responses, were behavior and discipline were considered as factors that they were concerned about, bullying, safety of the school generally, those were the things that were cited. In terms of, I'm sorry, in terms of programs, there was some concern about the elementary programming, the rigor of the academic coursework at that level, 3.24% indicated that. Instrumental music, there was some indication that they thought instrumental music programs were stronger in other districts. 21st century skills, focus on 21st century skills was mentioned, and then a number of them were leaving for the virtual academies, CAM, Clayton Ridge, things like that, doing In terms of size, one of the primary concerns was the elementary class size, the feeling that it was too large, 6.5% indicated that. That the middle and high schools generally were too large, not necessarily class size, but just overall, they wanted a smaller feel to their middle or high school, or that the district itself or the school was smaller, and they felt their child might get more individualized attention. Convenience, childcare was an issue. They were, it was more convenient to attend that school because their childcare was in that district. Some of them indicated that they were closer to work, that the school was closer to their work, that their home is closer to the school in the other district, 3.24%. Most of this was the Westfield Elementary School in Lynnmar, the Lynnmar District. Many of them worked for the other districts, so they took their children to work with them. And then, the Marion Homeschool Assistance Program was 20%. 20% of the individuals were leaving for that reason. When you look at the percent of open enrollment out from our district, and this was for fiscal year 12, this was based on the 11-12 school year, you can see that Cedar Rapids is about in the middle there in terms of the total number of students who open enroll out. Some of the surrounding districts have larger open enrollment out than Cedar Rapids School District, Marion, Albernett, Lynnmar. This data comes from the Department of Education Certified Enrollment website. If you were to look at the total open enrollment in to a district, which we weren't studying in this particular thing, but you would determine that, actually, of the Urban Education Network Schools, Cedar Rapids has the largest open enrollment into the district of 2.4% of their total enrollment. We know that when kids enter in kindergarten, they tend to persist. This shows you the number of students in either alternative kindergarten or kindergarten who open enrolled into our district in the school year, starting in 2008, '09. And you can see that we had a decline in the number that we were admitting into the district. It's recovered a little bit in the current year, and we're hopeful that that will, trend will continue, or will become a trend. So, in summary, maybe Justin can help me out with that. We know that 38.6% of our open enrollment out is to, for continuation, for students to continue in the district where they were residing. Of the other things that we looked at, the Marion Homeschool Assistance Program, convenience, and smaller district or school or class size comprised about 50% of the remaining responses for individuals who open enroll out, and then 11.65% were the variety of other reasons that we reviewed earlier. Questions?
Questions or comments?
I think when I talked with folks at Lynnmar, they also said that Marion Homeschool Program was the largest open enrollment out for their district as well. And I'm just wondering if the Department of Ed has any information on the students that are in that program, and if there's any indication of how well those students are doing on standardized tests, or, you know, persistence into college, or anything like that, that we might look at? Is there a certain...
There really isn't. Homeschool Assistance Programs are under the umbrella of competent private instruction, so really, they don't have to report their assessment results to the state. So, to my knowledge, there isn't any summary kind of data like that.
Anne, I believe you have some...
Yeah, I just had a question. So, the open enrollment allows students to continue the continuation thing? Open enrollment is something that if a family applies by a certain deadline, and they don't require special programming, where they are permitted to open enroll, is that correct?
Correct.
So, they may have, so they may have children who aren't even in school yet, but when they do get to school, then they would want to continue those students as well because the families in the previous district.
Right. Because if their siblings have been open enrolled to continue, typically, but they would have to apply for those additional students.
Right, they have to apply for each additional child.
You're absolutely correct. If they apply by that deadline and they're accepted by the other district.
And there's room in the program and all that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Gary?
Thank you for the information. As I look through the summary, I really have a tough time putting, getting a handle on anything that we could effectively address as far as decreasing the open enrollment, some of the larger numbers, the Marion Homeschool Assistance Program. I mean, I don't think we have a whole lot of control over that. We can maybe do a better job with advertising, with some of the strong points that we do have. There could be some misconception about what goes on within our district. Sometimes it easily happens in a large district, to do a better job of communicating. I find it interesting that the one slide about the, how we compare with the open enrollment and our concern, we have other districts that are right around us that have a larger Lynnmar, Marion, in particular, both have a higher percentage of open enrollment out, so, thank you. I think we can do some further analysis of this, but I don't see any major efforts that we could do at this point.
Keith?
I was just quickly figuring out on Marion's open, or their Homeschool Assistance Program. I know we used to have a stronger program in this district, and to me, that looks like, I just quickly figured out that $750,000 a year that we're paying out. So, I'd like to have some analysis of what it would take for us to upgrade our open enrollment, our Homeschool Assistance Program, so that the taxpayers that live in this district can keep it in this district. So, I think that ought to be something, I know I'm just one, that we ought to be looking at real hard on what they have, and can we, can we get our program up to speed? Another thing that I think we need to really consider is, it's obvious, always has been, if you go out in kindergarten or first grade, I mean, open roll out, that you likely stay out. So, I happen to be on Iowa State University recruiting that does mentoring with parents and so on that are thinking about going to university. I pushed that one, and I got an agree from both, but they have an excellent program there, too. This is what Iowa State offers. So, can we get a program going out that, you know, kindergarten, when we had the roundup, that we tried to do a better job, and this falls into the advertising area, of really going after those parents, to let them know those really true strengths. And I think this, I know this district has some true strengths that are tools that can be offered that other districts cannot do, to get that mentoring program, so to speak, with the parents, say, "Hey, you've got to look at Cedar Rapids District. This is what they've been able to do for our child." And so, those are two points I'd like to make, that we've got to really go strong in the kindergarten roundup, make people feel really welcome, and provide them information if they got misconceptions about our district. Didn't mean to make that a sermon, but I think we really got to do it. It's a ton of money to this district. And I agree, you know, that overall, if you look at us, we rate pretty good, but we've got to do better.
Just a reminder that the Homeschool Assistance Program funding was reduced from .6 to .3, and it had a significant impact on how we staff that program and how many children we can serve. And we often have waiting lists to get in our Homeschool Assistance Program because of that. So, it has, it has seriously limited the kinds of things that we can do. If you have a different delivery model, rather than having full-time FTE, which is what I believe the Marion Homeschool Assistance Program has, that would significantly change how our Homeschool Assistance Program operates.
Gary, did you have a...
That was just the point that I was going to make, that, right, that we have to look at the funding, and so, bringing them back, if they stay at homeschooling, we, I don't know if it's cost-effective. Thank you.
There were a number of families that indicated that they were going out for the elementary grades and would consider coming back to the district for middle and high school because of the wide variety of course offerings and things that we have available in this district. So, I got some sense of that from some of the things that I read.
Anne, did you?
Just, I want to concur that this is a great report. This is the kind of thing that we had talked about a year ago, when we had all the discussions about why the buildings were not so full, and this is the kind of thing that we need to see and keep an eye on. I do like this homeschool discussion, because that is a big chunk of kids, but at the same time, I think Wilson offers the homeschool program, is that where it resides?
There is where it's currently housed.
And I just think the analysis by Dr. Benson and his staff, what Keith was saying, is right on, because the idea that, you know, you want to grow a program, that you get 30 cents on the dollar, I want to know what the numbers are, because I think there is some, you know, people have that choice, so be it, and maybe we even go the other direction and scale it back and even further than it is today as far as the homeschooling goes. So, I think this is right on, and this information hopefully will make it out to the masses, because they see that number of kids leaving the district, and it raises a lot of alarms. And it really, with this additional information in the survey, will provide that answer to the question, which is, what is going on with the Cedar Rapids School District? It's got the best programs, more offerings, more of everything, and why would anyone not go there? And I think the convenience issue and the homeschool issue answers 35% of that right there.
Yes, Anne?
Yeah, I had another comment. I guess I'm not ready to concede on continuation, and wondered if, you know, for families that have a high school student, continuation, to me at least, as a parent, makes a lot of sense. As a parent of an elementary student, I'm not so sure that it does, and it still would be, there may be value in knowing more about continuation and how much of it is continuation because of the previous district, because that's where the daycare is, or is it, because I think at the element, there is lost, there is, community is lost, to a sense, when the students aren't going to their neighborhood school. And I'm not sure if parents always take that into account as well, and it may be something that when we do get requests for, that when we get those open enrollment out things, that we could still send a letter saying, "There is some advantages, and if you want to change your mind, you're always welcome to come back." I don't know, a marketing, back to the marketing thing, but we may want to reconsider about whether we get some data on that continuation question, or maybe, maybe you have data already knowing how many of different age groups.
We probably have it by grade level.
Yeah, that you would know the students by grade level, and maybe we'd want to look at doing something in the elementary age group, but then, you know, it's a family thing, too, so you can't, there's a lot of connections and a lot of things that matter, but if the oldest student is in third grade and they're doing continuation, they have two other younger siblings, there is something lost when they don't become part of their new community.
But then, it becomes a matter of convenience, too.
Yeah.
If they have siblings in that other district, transportation, those are convenience issues.
Anne, you had kind of...
I did, just after visiting some of our elementary schools and thinking back to when my kids were in elementary school, I saw some really nice kindergarten class sizes in the mid-teens, which I've been seeing some private kindergarten vendors in town bragging about, you know, in the mid-teens and all these things, which, from what I saw, were right in the ballpark with class size on those, those younger grade levels. I did see a couple of classes that were a little bit larger, where we had staffed some additional paraprofessionals in, and I'm wondering if maybe we can... And I'm wondering if maybe we can look at some of the data on, I guess, I don't know if it's return on investment, but at, at what point is the tipping point for class size, especially in some of those elementary to middle school levels, adding in additional staff versus maybe losing some of these students to other districts where they are, are seeing smaller class sizes, at least perception wise? 12.97% is only about nine or 10 families out of all of these that decided to apply. So I'm not, to fill out the survey, so I'm not sure how much effort you put into this, but it, it might be an interesting discussion at some point. And it also raises the question, I think for me, of where do we as a board say a certain class size limit? We hear about the middle sized, the median classes. How, how big is too big in our district? And at what cost do we work to bring that down? Because there is a cost obviously to the district. Do we get better student achievement out of having a little bit larger classes and putting in a full-time teacher and a para? Or can we pull back a little bit on staffing and get better student achievement? I, I don't know, but it's something I think we should look at in the future.
Hopeous notes are being taken, John, so.
Good.
I think we'll be looking at that. I think it's safe to say that this board would like to see this report each and every year so that we can get some trending data. I also want to, the marketing, the promotion of our school district, Dave and I are talking about that. We are making efforts to reach out to more students and more families. Mind Mixers was one of those efforts, Chalk Talk. I think we're going to be launching a Facebook page in, in the next week or two, enhancing our social media presence. I hope we have some mobile apps with some of those new things that we're going to be doing too, so that we're, we're of the techno, technological age. So I, and I also know that Dave had a presentation to the Realtors Association in the fall. That's a group that we're going to want to visit with regularly. We know that when new families come to town, they look to their Realtors to kind of direct them and give them information on school. So all good discussion, all good conversation and, and information from everyone. And thank you very much for the report. We'll look forward to it and what we do with it in the upcoming months. Dave, did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
No.
Okay, all right. Next, we'll turn it over to Gary, and I apologize, Gary and Shannon, for shifting things around, but I know you're adaptable.
Thank you. In the spirit of increased wellness, I'm choosing to stand in front of the board rather than sit. At the request of the Board of Education, we're sharing updates from principals on school improvement plans and their supportive district goals. Two weeks ago, Linda Rayzac, principal at Harding Middle School, shared information on how the school improvement plan at Harding supported district goals. And tonight, Shannon Bucknell, principal at Franklin Middle School, will share how the Franklin School Improvement Plan supports district goals. Shannon Bucknell came to the Cedar Rapids Community School District in 2002 after serving as the high school junior high principal in Pleasantville, Iowa. Shannon became the principal at Franklin Middle School in 2005 after serving three years at Kennedy High School as associate principal. My pleasure to have my colleague tell you a little bit more about the Franklin Middle School School Improvement Plan. Shannon?
Thank you, Dr. O'Malley. Appreciate you inviting me this evening to speak with the board. And we're hoping that you get a little bit, a better understanding of what we do at Franklin Middle School and the types of, the things that we work with and do with our students and, and help them become great members of, of society. As you can see, we do have five different goals that we work on, and those goals are very similar to all other six middle schools that we have in, in the, in the district. And one thing that we have done, and actually with the guidance of the district staff, is really put together a, a great team. And it's just not me, it's just not Mr. Baylor, who is here this evening, and our associate principal, and also Ms. Dvorak, who's our facilitator, who's also here this evening, supporting us in our efforts. But it is a, a group of individuals that, that is a, a good cross-section of our entire building. And I think as we look at our school improvement plan, one thing that we figured out very quickly is that if we have input from all different areas, that we can get a, a buy-in and allow us to get what we're looking at is, is the improvement of our students. And if you look at our goals, our last two goals, professional learning communities and closing the achievement gap, those two goals are intertwined with our communication goal, our math goal, and our social emotional goal. And so no matter what we do, no matter what we're working on at, at Franklin Middle School and actually all the middle schools in Cedar Rapids, is that it is, we're working on, we're working out of the premise of, of collaborating and working together as, as a, a group of adults with our students. And then also, we're also making an effort to, to look at closing that, that gap of our, of our subgroups. And so as I'm talking about this, we'll, we'll look a little bit more in our professional learning communities and achievement gap, but just knowing that, that those two bottom goals are part of our other three goals. As we look at our professional learning communities, I'm sure you've seen these four questions. This is something that does drive every decision that we make. It could be through our attendance, it could be students' behavior, our academic goals, everything that we do, these four questions drive, drive our, our decisions and looking at what is best for students. And I know that this is a, a question, so these four questions, if you would ask our staff, what are the four PLC questions? They most definitely can let you know how they use those questions, how it drives their instruction, and, and really makes a better situation for all of our students. I know this is a lot of writing here, but I just wanted to give you what our communication goal is, and I won't spend a lot of time on this, but one thing that we did do, look at it different, or actually looked at different, is how we, we typically have just looked at improvement over the year from one, from the, the, the school year before to the current school year. And something that I appreciate, that we have been given some additional direction on, is looking at that expected growth. We have students who are getting a little bit better every single year, but we're looking at that year growth. And we want to make sure that all of our students are getting that year growth. And, and what we look at is what we have is the Iowa assessment. Now, I am excited to get the opportunity for our students to take the Iowa assessment again this spring, to have a good baseline from the first year, which was last year, of taking the Iowa assessment. And we know that the Iowa test of basic skills is a little bit different. We know that the Iowa assessment is, is more rigorous and we're hoping that we do see some increases. Actually, we're not hoping, we know we're going to see some increases in a lot of the things that we're, we're working on. One thing that our staff did was take a look at our Iowa assessment and did an item analysis with that. And we took a look at three things that we saw with our reading comprehension is, the students were struggling with main idea, drawing conclusions, and identifying details. And we had a, a good look at that. And so we're trying to work with, with those three ideas and looking at our communication goal and, and, and things that we are doing. We are using Read 180 System 44 for some of our students that are struggling readers that need additional help outside of what we're doing in just our regular classes. And the thing that we have figured out, and it's taken us a couple of years, and I think we're doing a great job with it, is that this is in addition to. It's not taking a place of something. It's in addition to our, our current language arts and actually all of our core classes of teaching those literacy strategies. And I think that's important, that we are getting that additional, that additional time. One thing that has helped, we have, when we first started the Read 180 program, it was for students who were not entitled, who were not in special education. But we have been able to add students who are in special education that have a reading goal, or maybe they don't have a reading goal, but they're not at grade level. And so having those two programs has been a, a great help and we've seen some, some wonderful increases in some of our students' reading scores. Now, how do we know if they really know it? Things that we have done at Franklin is we've worked hard on, on creating formative assessments that can be systematically used throughout our building. I, I feel very confident that as our group, as we made, we put together our exit tickets, looking at those three different reading comprehension ideas, is that our, our teachers are really understanding what, where the students are at and what we need to do with them. Is it, do we just need additional time in that particular class? Or do we need to pull them out during our intervention time? And Franklin Middle School has done a great job, our entire staff. When you, when you talk about changing a schedule at a middle school or at a high school, that is really, really difficult to do because it's kind of in, you know, it's part of the, the culture. And at Franklin Middle School, having a rotating schedule, and if you've ever been part of Franklin Middle School, the rotating schedule has been there for 30 some years, and it just didn't work well for what we were trying to do. And also taking, we cut some time off our, our core classes to add this 30-minute instructional block, and our teachers have bought into it. We took it very slow, and I think we're at the point now where we are, are getting the students that we need and allowing them to get some additional help. And so, again, going back to those exit tickets, that allows us to know if a student needs additional help because we don't want to stop what we're doing in a class. If five students or six students only ha, are missing that particular concept, we can pull them out during that intervention block. So that's been extremely, extremely helpful. And that's what we call our tier one and tier two. So if you've heard that, our tier two is our intervention that we do. Our tier one is just our actual classroom instruction. And so if a teacher sees that all of the students, or a majority of the students, are struggling with a particular concept, obviously they need to take a look at what they are doing in that particular classroom or that particular lesson and try something different. Try something that hopefully that all the students will get the, the idea or the concept. Now, our math goal is also very similar to the rest of the district's goal, is that we want to increase in our Iowa assessment. And if you notice, when we, when we talk about increasing our, our scores, we never have the conversation about, okay, we need to do this because it's going to increase our Iowa assessment test scores. Our goal is to work with our student learning expectations and connect, that are connected with the Iowa Core in both math and language arts right now. And we hope to get science here pretty quickly. But we don't talk about how we're going to increase Iowa assessment scores. We talk about how can we get those, those student learning expectations up to where they should be at that particular grade level? And again, we just go back to the four questions. And, and one thing I did leave out is, is the fourth question, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, is what we do if they already know it. Again, we follow the Iowa Core and how do we know if they are understanding the particular concept? And we do, we use formative assessment. And I think our teachers, actually I know our teachers are getting better at that of understanding what, what they want their students to understand. And I think more importantly is, if you walk into a classroom, you'll see the student learning expectation written up on the board. You'll, you'll hear the teachers talking about, okay, this is what I want you to understand. This is why we need to do this. And I think that's extremely important. We also, in math, we have multiple district assessments that are, that compare us to proficiencies, but also compare us to the other buildings. We break that down by subgroups also, which is very important for us if we're close, trying to close that achievement gap. And then, you know, one thing that we have struggled with is some of the scaffolding skills. And what I mean by that is, you know, for example, it could be a particular math concept, but if they're struggling with multiplying fractions or dividing fractions, but they might understand the particular concept they're working on, then we need to find a time and a way to, to work with those students and some of those lower level math skills. And so we do it a couple of different ways. Obviously, our tier one is our classroom instruction. We also take, took a look at our, the Iowa assessment to find out which, what kind of skills our students are struggling with. And then we created an additional time for those scaffolding skills. And so on top of the intervention time for our math people, we pull students if they're struggling with a particular concept, but we also have figured out in our schedule to pull them, to pull students if they are struggling on some, some lower level skills. And we're using the district computation test to, to drive that, that initiative. And again, everything that we do is data-backed and it drives what we're, we're attempting to accomplish with our students. And we, we understand that the computation test is not part of the, the Iowa assessment, how we're scored and how that's reported to the state, but we know that that's extremely important. We want to find time to, to make that happen. And so I'm very proud of our math people to look outside the box and, and try to work with, with what we have, which is exactly what we need to do. Our last goal, which is again, rather long, but I'll just kind of break it down for you guys, and I know you have it in front of you, but that is the social emotional behavior goal. And really, it's looking at three different things that we're, that we're working with. We're working with our PBIS structure, which Franklin is in year four of implementing PBIS, and that is working with students and making good choices. And I'm very proud of our, our staff and our students of, of understanding what our expectations are. We take some time with that. And I think it's important that if we build that on the front end, that'll give us a lot more time on the back end of instructional time if we're not dealing with behaviors. And the whole premise, and I'm sure you've probably heard about PBIS and, and many different presentations, but the way we look at it is, is if a student doesn't know how to do math, we teach them. If a student, student doesn't know how to behave, the first thing we can, we should not be doing is just be punishing them. We need to give them the expectations. And so we've worked very hard with that, and our data shows that our officer referrals are going down, and we're getting to the point where we're well below what the national standards for number of officer referrals per 100 students should be. So I'm very proud of our staff and our students for making that, that work. Also, we're looking at grades and we want students that, making sure that they're failing less classes. We think that, we know that if a student is getting a D or an F, obviously they're not getting where they, what they need. And so we want to make sure that we are increasing the number of students with positive passing grades. And this year is the first time we, we've always looked at, or actually since I've been at Franklin, we've looked at the number of failures, but now we're also looking at those, the Ds too. So if I was to take a look at the number of failures in the past seven years, our staff has done a great job working with our students and we have significantly increased the number of failures at, at Franklin. And so it, it is a, a lot of work with both students and staff and, and making those, making those tough decisions and, and working really hard together. And this is just again, the three questions that, that we talk about and, you know, attendance, you know, we have to work hard to get students to school. And we know if they're there, we can give them a fighting chance. We know mobility is really difficult and we've worked hard of creating, when a student comes in from outside of our building, a, a nice way for them to feel comfortable in the orientation process. And again, we go back to what we do with PBIS. We let them know what our expectations are. And so that has been positive. We even tried a lot of unique things. We have, we have about 30 some students at Franklin that still struggle a little bit to get to school. And we created, through the school messenger system, we created wake-up calls. So at 7:00 AM, they're getting a phone call to their house and it's, um, good morning, it's another great day at Franklin, hopefully you can make it on time. So just trying to, trying to unique ways to, to make them feel comfortable. And I think that the thing that we figured out is if a student's late or a student is, you know, you know, not there till 9:30. It used to be at Franklin, we would say, why aren't you here? What are you doing? Why can't you get in school on time? And I hope our students are feeling, thank you for being here. We're so glad that you made it. How can we help you? And we want this to be a, a very welcoming place. Our PBIS team, our tier one team and our tier two team is made up of about 12 staff members. And those individuals work extremely hard on attendance, on discipline, on academics. And so we work very diligently to understand and work with students to, to give them the best chance to be successful. So, you know, we've done some, some unique things and we're trying to steal ideas from other people, some other districts. And, and that's the nice thing about the Cedar Rapids School District is our middle school principals are so good about sharing what we have. And we, we love stealing ideas, good ideas from other people, and we're more than welcome to share our ideas. So I really appreciate all the work that all of our middle schools do with. I, I will go back to our question number four, and what do we do with the students that already know it? There's a lot of different things that we do at Franklin Middle School with the students that, that have an understanding of what the concept is we're trying to cover. I think our PAC program, I know our PAC program does a great job of doing both pull-out and push-in types of activities where our PAC teacher, Ms. Sebenga. where our PAC teacher, Ms. Sabenga, will go into classrooms and work with our sixth and seventh grade staff. And we also have opportunities of getting pull-outs. We have exploratory opportunities for mock trial, for Future Cities, for National History Day, that our students are involved in. We are sending students to different, for example, girls in engineering. Mr. Mattson in our Project Lead the Way program does a great job of getting kids involved in that. You know, just a lot of different opportunities for students. But also, and I know in a couple of weeks, we will have a presentation on expanding opportunities. We think our eighth graders have had some great experiences. And actually, last Thursday, we had a meeting at Washington High School, there was a meeting at Jefferson, and a meeting at Kennedy about the program for next year and the students who have qualified for that program. And it was nice that both, our experience, because we feed both into Washington and Kennedy, is inviting some of the students that are currently in the program and parents that are currently in the program, and letting them tell what they are experiencing. Because we as administrators, we as staff, we as adults have one perception, and they might have a different perception. So, that was great to hear from them, and I think the parents really appreciated all that information about what we're trying to do. Again, thank you, I'm sure I'm over, I apologize.
We have to stay after the board meeting, Shannon, because you were over. Thank you very much, we appreciated that information. I'd like to open it up for questions or comments from the board.
I just have a comment, you know, the use of data and everything that you're using, and that's really great. You know, that's what we've really been trying, working on, and I'm glad that you're really using it. And then, are you getting the information that you need from this data? I know the DASH board programs and so on.
Well, like for example, our district computation test, our eighth grade teachers and our seventh and sixth grade teachers have broken down each one of the questions in the 45-question computation test and said, "All right, if three students or four students are missing this particular question or this particular concept, we need to pull them in together and work with them just on that idea, rather than saying, all right, everybody below the 50th percentile on this computation test, you're all going to come in because Johnny might need something different than Jane, and what Bob needs is completely different with those two." And so, really getting pinpoint on what we're asking them to work on has been very beneficial and actually really eye-opening. And I will appreciate, I do appreciate the financial support and also the support from the district administration of bringing individuals in, like for example, last Wednesday, Mike Matos. He, you know, sometimes you have to hear it multiple times before you think it's going to help you. And just after talking to some of our staff after that particular PD, we had individuals saying, "Oh, my gosh, I need to do something different, and I need to make better choices of how we use our time and how we use this data." So, it's been very, very good of what we've been able to accomplish.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Ian.
Yeah, you mentioned your staff was here, but you didn't point them out yet.
Well, okay.
Did they not want to be pointed?
Oh, I'm sure they do. Well, they, I didn't bribe them yet, that they're coming. But Kathy DeVorek has been at Franklin as a facilitator for a long time, so I won't tell her how long. And then, Mr. Baylor, our associate principal, has been with me for six years. And so, he came over from McKinley. So, we're happy that they both are here to support, and they both do a great job of what we ask them to do and above and beyond what we ask them to do, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, that's why I wanted to say hi, thanks.
Okay, Shannon, thank you so much. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Dave Benson to talk about a resolution regarding school funding.
Thank you, I know the board has had the opportunity to read this resolution. But just for the public, I'm going to go over the various wherethes and just briefly describe them. Whereas allowable growth has not kept pace with educational needs to support student learning. And whereas funding for Iowa schools over the last three years is the lowest in the 40-year history of the school aid formula. And whereas Iowa in the late 80s was eighth in the nation in per capita wealth spent on public education, we are now 31st. And whereas Iowa is about $1,000 less than average of other states in the nation. Think about that in a state that values or professes to value a highly educated workforce and population. We are $1,000 less than average. And it would take 16% allowable growth just to get us to average. And whereas school funding should be considered on its own merit and not in conjunction with other legislation, and the state should fulfill its requirements legally to pass school aid within the first 30 days of the legislative session. The Board of Education wants to encourage the community, the faculty and staff, to advocate for appropriate levels of school funding. And that school achievement is not all about changing policies and state law, but it is about systemic, sustained, long-term financial commitment to run our programs. And finally, whereas we will be held accountable to follow state law and must pass and certify a budget by April 15th so that collective bargaining agreements can be reached in good faith with our various unions and employee groups, and that curriculum and staffing decisions need to be made, we need to know what we need will be granted for the 1314 and 1415 school years. I won't read the "Now, therefore be it resolved," other than the last paragraph, which, I was using several source documents on this, and a board member kindly pointed out that I've got one too many is approved in this. But the last paragraph should read, "This resolution is approved by the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education in support of providing adequate current funding for Iowa schools, requesting 4% allowable growth by the Iowa Legislature for the 1314 and 1415 school years." And I'm asking the board to adopt this resolution tonight. We will send it with a thank you letter to the Senate. The Senate has passed 4% allowable growth for the next two years and with a letter of request to the Iowa House that they please consider taking up the Senate's action and passing 4% and allowing us to have some ongoing revenue. So, I would make that recommendation to the board this evening.
That resolution?
Actually, this is a voice vote, so all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sorry.
I'm going to move in second and then.
Yep.
A second?
Discussion?
Discussion, as Alan and Dave and I visited the Capitol. Obviously, this has been passed through the Senate. But it became clear with the House local legislators that it would make a significant impact on them and the leadership and the governor if our parents in Cedar Rapids School District and other school districts would come together and let them know that not passing this 4% soon would have a detrimental effect on their own children. So, I don't know where we stand as a school district on being able to do this and coordinating with our local media sources. But if it is legally possible, I would encourage us to take this information, work with our PTAs, work with our schools and the parents groups, stakeholders, and come together with our local media so that the legislators in the House understand the personal impact this will have on their children, not passing this adequate funding for our public schools.
John, I think that's a great point. And actually, Alan and I spoke before the meeting, there's going to be a city PTA meeting, I believe, next Tuesday here at this facility. And we're going to share this information with them and encourage them to communicate with the legislators. That won't be our only effort, so Alan is working on rolling that out to parents that we possibly can, so, good comments.
Thank you.
Other comments or discussion?
I appreciate, Dave, you putting this together. I was out of town and missed the legislative forum in Des Moines the past week. But particularly like the fact, the paragraph talks about considering it on its standalone and not tying it to other legislation. I think some of the education reform bills become very complex and need a lot of time and merit of study on their own. I hate to see pressure to move that forward without a lot of study and possibly change in order to just get the 4% allowable growth. We need it, it's, the state can afford it, we've been cut on previously. It should be just passed and moved forward as a no-brainer, it should be just done.
Keith?
My concern is, is we won't get a 4% allowable growth, even if they do pass 4% allowable growth, because we've had lots of enrollment. And while, you know, I like this document, I think for a lot of districts around Iowa, that has, first off, people think you got a 4% growth, we really didn't in our case or won't. And we need to, we need to really get after looking at the whole formula. Because some of the districts like ours that have a large group of difficult students, we have to do more with less.
We have some proposals around funding at-risk and dropout prevention initiatives at a higher level. And I was encouraged by what I heard from some of the legislators, particularly Senator Hoag has helped us in that regard. But this 4% really is for ongoing necessary expenses around staffing our current programming levels. We're going to have a hard time staffing our current programming levels next year if we have another 0 or 2% allowable growth. And the problem is, it gets later and later every week we wait. For us to do adequate planning to meet our legal requirements, to give notice to employees if we were going to do that, we need to know, and we need to know within that first 30 days of the legislative session.
I just have, real quick, I just want to know if there's support by this board that in March, we would have maybe a special meeting to have Steve Graham and others, Dr. Benson, explain to us. By then, we should have a picture anyway, or some assumptions to work off of. I think this board's going to have to make some really tough decisions this year, from what I could sense on Tuesday. And this document is overwhelming, to say the least, the comprehensive report that we get or the budget that Steve Graham puts together, it is overwhelming for all of us. And so, if there's any support to look at those things and come up with some suggestions or hear from the administration and concur, I think we need to work together on that sometime in March, if we're agreeable.
I think those budget discussions are coming up, probably beginning of our next meeting.
I don't want the same discussion we had last year, though, it was a little too quick, I think. I think, I'm talking about a little more time. It requires us to go offline a little bit more and more detail and come up with some creative solutions.
About that, thank you. I didn't mean to rush this through in a voice vote, so Alan, thank you for holding me back. Any other comments or discussion? Hey, this is a voice vote, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, and Jill, am I turning this over to you for a moment?
I would just ask, we reported at the last board meeting on the personnel report that we did lose a current employee that passed away. And I was just going to ask the board to observe a moment of silence for Pamela Rao, who began her employment with the school district in November of 2001, serving our students as a bus attendant. She always provided a smile and a friendly face to those riding on her bus. Her commitment and dedication to the students, her peers, and the Transportation Department will be missed.
We'll observe them all in silence. Let's go out to that family. On our meeting agenda, we did have an exempt meeting that will not be taking place this evening. So, we stand adjourned, and please take your calendar home and provide us with some feedback on tonight's meeting. Thank you.